I want to welcome everybody to the April sixteenth work session on fire and EMA. If I could get approval agenda this time.
Second.
Second, on favor, I?
Uh.
Again, this is the third work session on fire and EMA, and we appreciate everybody being here. If anybody here tonight that wants to speak, I don't know how many people wanting to talk, but if you'll sign in, we've got a sign in sheet. You can sign at any time to be recognized. If we don't have that many to come forward, we won't need a sign in sheet, but I didn't know what to anticipate. But again, Commissioner Kishen, I think you wanted to do an opening commenter. And then after that, I'll turn the floor over Commissioner Wood.
All right. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it, Chairman. So normally, I don't make notes, but I think this is an exception because it seems to be a pretty hot topic, and for good reason. There's been a lot of discussion on social media, in the community, amongst a lot of folks out there. And some of it's factual, which is typical, some of it's not. So I just wanted to try to bring some clarity on what plans that we've discussed as a board, not what's heard out in the public, but what we've discussed in board meetings. And so first of all, there's never been a plan to permanently move a full-time position to a part-time position, whether that's a chief, whether that's a deputy chief, or anything else. There's never been a discussion to permanently do that. What we were presented with was two people of the top three leadership in the fire department, fire rescue department are retiring. That's fact. So we were addressing, how do we best move forward? What is the best option for us going forward for this county and for the fire department? So with that, the plan that we were talking about, or have been talking about, is putting the current assistant chief into the full-time firefighter's chief as an interim chief. That's all there was to it. There was not a discussion about changing that position to suit one person. That was, in our opinion, the best move to move us forward as the retirements came. But along with the plan that nobody has mentioned, or very few people have mentioned, is separating fire and EMA. A lot of counties are doing that. We were fortunate enough to have Don running two positions, full-time positions, as EMA director and the fire chief. That's not in every county. That's not... It's typical in some, but it's not typical in all of them. So as we move forward, we talked about separating those back out and having fire and EMA two separate positions. We talked about adding three battalion chiefs, not that would be scheduled at the same time, but three scheduled on different rotating shifts, so that we had 24-hour coverage at all times. We have that now with full-time positions. We'll have that going forward with full-time positions. The battalion chiefs would ensure that 24/7 coverage. This would also allow for the approximately 20 additional part-time firefighters. We have about 23 right now in the county. This would add about another 20 part-time firefighters. We've had lots of interest from surrounding counties that would come. Most everybody knows that people that work full-time for our positions also work part-time jobs. Most all of them do. The fact that most of them are volunteering in Jones County, the opportunity to make a little money for a part-time position is enticing to a lot of folks. So how will we fill those positions? People want to work. People want to work for money. We know that volunteerism has declined across the nation. That is one of the things that made us start talking about, how do we move forward with a volunteer fire department or a hybrid fire department, which we've had for some time? If you'll remember, so about three years ago, I guess it was, two or three years ago, we started talking about restructuring mainly due to the lack of volunteerism that we were seeing, and knowing that Don and Karen were planning on retiring at some point. When we started talking about that, that we approved, the board approved approximately $600,000 at the time to talk about nine full-time firefighters, so that we could have at least three stations that were manned for full-time firefighters. That still didn't provide 24/7 coverage, because if you do the basic math of three people at 24 hours a day times seven days a week, it doesn't add up to give you 24-hour coverage with full-time positions. So if we didn't, which we have not filled those positions, if you don't fill those nine positions between salaries and benefits, we can get a lot more with part-time. Then it just becomes a scheduling issue, so that we've got coverage 24/7 in this county. So I made a couple of notes of questions that people have asked, whether it be in social media or people that have reached out to us. And one of them, I talked about, you know, why now? We talked about it for some time, that we don't have the numbers for a full-time fire department. That's just a fact. We've grown more than a volunteer fire department, so we do need some type of hybrid. Looking at this plan gives us the best benefit going forward to have all these positions that we could schedule to cover. Yes, Don and Karen's retirement kind of sped that up a little bit and made it highlighted the fact that we had to make some changes in the department. So I really believe, and I think most of them believe, that this plan would provide the personnel needed and allow for a smooth transition going forward while we search for the next chief. And I want to be clear about that, while we search for the next chief. This has never been a decision that this is always going to be a part-time chief, and we're just putting somebody in that position. I don't think anybody believed that was what we were doing. How will it be funded through the $600,000? We keep hearing about the savings that would be recognized from this. The savings we're talking about is the $600,000 that we budgeted for nine full-time positions. So the savings that we're talking about is from that $600,000. So funding these positions in the plan that we're talking about would be less than the $600,000 for nine full-time firefighters that we had planned. A big one, why did we ask input from the fire staff and from the station captains and from the assistant chief? I'll put that simply. Who better would we ask? If you had a medical condition, would you ask a doctor or a mechanic? I believe, we've done this with almost every department head that we've hired. We've done it with, even with animal control. We asked the rescues and the volunteers to come give us input, because they know how best to run these departments. And so I think that is in our best interest to get input and recommendations from people that do it every single day, that protect this county right now. So that's why we ask them. Certification for emergency management. It's public knowledge. When Don and Karen retire, we don't have any certified EMA people in the county. That's not uncommon. You don't, you, there's a difference between certified and qualified. Certified EMA is normally when you're in an EMA position, either at a director level or assistant director level. There's not a real reason to pay money for a certification if you don't utilize that certification. But we have a lot of people that do that work every single day. The position that is an EMA director position that is still on the books, one of the requirement for that job will be certification for an EMA. It's not, it's not something we're just not going to do or do away with. Why was the assistant chief recommended for the interim position? That is a big one that we've heard people talk about it. You know, I go back to asking the firefighters what their opinions are. If you're telling me that there are three people in, I'm just going to say command staff at the top of the pole in this department, that have all been there in 10-plus years and running our department the way it's been ran, if you're telling me that the second in charge person is not qualified and the best fit to move into that position, then we hadn't been doing something right for over 10 years. That's just a natural progression in my mind. And the fact that he's been there, he's done it. Don, Karen, and Thomas have brought this department miles above where it was 10 years ago. And so that's why we felt like an interim position for the assistant chief is the natural flow. He knows the history of the county, he knows the history of the departments, he knows how they train, how they work, and obviously, from the meetings that we've had with the fire captains of each station, and we ask them to go to your stations and talk about it. And that was what we were brought back, that majority of the station captains supported that decision. So how, I'll talk a little bit about how we fill the part-time positions. We've already got interest from other fire departments, paid fire departments, that are looking to fill these part-time positions. They got part-time jobs anyway. They're looking for it. So Chairman, I don't want to use up all the time. I'll just end by saying that Don is building an amazing team in Jones County, and we've been blessed to have him and Karen running dual roles. So we had two people filling four positions. This current plan will have an extra person running those four positions. Instead of just two, we'll have three people running those four positions, in my mind. But back to Don and Karen, I want to thank them for everything they've done. They've put their heart into it all these years. I don't want them going out on a bad note. I want them going out so that they can enjoy their retirement, because they've earned it. And the last thing I'll address, that's been put out there several times about John's opinion on this was that, and all this. Let me just be, let me just say that John's got 30 years of experience in firefighting. I've told him this. If he doesn't have a valuable opinion, nobody does. I respect and value his opinion, whether we agree on it or not. He's got, he has earned a right by his experience and his knowledge to have valuable input on it. And I personally think that's some of the things that makes this board work the way it does. We've got different experiences and different responsibilities that we have in our day jobs that bring a lot to the table, and I think that's how we best get to where the things need to go in this process. So, thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Wood?
Thank you, Sam. It's a big topic. It's become very political. So I took it upon myself over the last two weeks to reach out randomly without just look at a map of Georgia, and I'm going to pick approximately a dozen counties, and I'm going to call. And so I reached out to approximately a dozen commissioners, chairmen around the state. How would you handle this? And several of them suggested, and I agree 100%, the first time I've heard the interim word tonight is, that's a great idea. Interim is a great word. They suggested, if it gets too political in your county, reach outside of Jones County. Go to a third-party agency such as Middle Georgia Regional Commission. Let them advertise for the final position. But if you have to pick someone immediately, then you go that route. You have somebody can step in if Don were to retire tomorrow. You pick an interim chief to handle the business of the county, fire business, EMA, whatever is to be done. But you advertise, you fairly let them pick a group of candidates, down to maybe three, and to present back to the board of commissioners, a group of three candidates that they advertise for. And then the board of commissioners make that decision, and we could bring in the fire captains in the interview process at that time. But it gets the politics out of the firehouse, so to speak. Because I do not have a pick for the fire chief. I do not have a preference. I just want fair hiring practices. At the first work session, it was presented that this gentleman be given the position. I'm like, we just opening up the application period. We haven't even closed the application period according to Monday, was it yesterday or Friday? I think it was Friday. Application period's still open. So I am not opposed to an interim position being handed to an individual. But we do need to reach outside and advertise for the most highly qualified, talented individual that can take the position as a full-time fire chief, EMA director. Because that's, now we're talking about splitting it up tonight. A lot of counties do that. I talked to a board of commissioners chairman in west-central Georgia 15 minutes before I got here tonight. He said, "We're a county of 29,000 people, much as you are." He already knew our population. He said, "We're trying to get to where you're at. We're trying to get to a full-time." He says, "Y'all are already there." He says, "I don't suggest you go backwards." He says, "Interim is good. That'll get your daily activities handled, but you need to stay at a full-time position." And I'm thinking interim, you have to put a time limit on that. 90 days, no more than 120. Let the advertising process go on, the interview process, and then you select, like I said, without prejudice, the most highly qualified, talented applicant that comes to this county, or can come to this county. And I know I've had comments given to me of, well, nobody knows the county like somebody already here on the inside. Well, we've hired a water department person that worked outside of Jones County. We've hired a public works director from outside of Jones County. And I think they do an exceptional job in this county in a very short amount of time of getting up to speed. So I mean, it's, there's a lot of things out there, but I'm just troubled by some of the threats that I think the one of them said, I'm not going to call names, but it said, if the right person is not picked, there'll be a lot of bags turned in at the EMA office, meaning gear bags, turnout gear bags. That bothers me. And I questioned some of the commissioners around the state that I asked, and they said, "If that's being said, that person's heart's probably not in the right place." And one guy told me, he said, "We have terminated a captain at our fire department." He said he was the best firefighter in the county, but he had terrible people skills. And I'm not saying anybody has terrible people skills, but he said, "If somebody's putting that on social media and writing, that's bad. That's bad, demoralizing your department, because it grows." And another person said, "Well, it's a bad idea, because fire don't care. It'll burn anybody. It'll burn any victim, it'll burn any firefighter. It's nothing to play with. And I mean, we're here for the county, and I truly love this county, and I only want the best for it." And I've heard people say, "I want this person or that person." I don't care. I don't, without prejudice, I don't care who gets it, but I want a fair hiring practice." And I talked with Ms. Wagner, the HR director of Jones County, the other day, and I had to express the same things to her. Is that what I expressed? Yes.
Anything else?
That's it.
We've had three work sessions, and like I said, by chances, anybody here tonight, I know we've, I've heard a lot of people say they were coming or whatnot. Anybody here coming tonight that's not signed in, that has concerns or questions they'd like to address this board? Oh, wait a minute. I was going, oh, I'm sorry. My bad. My bad. I'm trying to slide all I can in.
You're fine. Go ahead.
Anyone?
Most questions, Chairman.
Any questions? We had people that were supposed to be here tonight that had, were invited, and I was going to see if anybody was here tonight that hasn't been to a work session that has questions they want to present to these, excuse me, these two commissioners. No one? All right. I got those two quick, any questions for these two commissioners? I'll hand it off. Ms. Tho.
When this was first presented to us, I agreed with John that, yes, we do need a full-time director. We don't have enough time to get a full-time director into this position at this time. And so if you go back and you look at what the firemen had presented to us, it was a great thing to fall on and build off of. If you also look at, and I'm just going by example of just what was on Facebook by Ms. Stephanie Jordan telling us that per year, the plan that's presented to us is going to cost us $423,193.68, and I'm just going by her calculations. Well, we've got a salary scale that we've already got in place, and we've got $600,000 more dollars out there to add to this salary base. So we're well up under the budget that is set forth to fund the fire department. And we will have more people in the places. The ISO rates will go down, because we'll have four, three stations staffed 24/7. You'll have more fire response and everything else. And then we have time to work on finding that person that it's going to take to run Jones County. So it's a win-win for right now.
Commissioner? Horton.
He's got notes.
Yeah, schoolteacher and me. I don't play poker, because what's on my heart and what's on my mind is on my face. So I'll just start real quickly with this. If you've been on the fire department for 10 years or more, raise your hand. Love it. If you recall this, raise your hand after I finish. About 10 years ago, I sat here in this seat, and I suggested doing something very similar. But my approach was using a fire tax or a fire fee, right? Taxing each parcel $25 to cover the part-time salaries for the fire department. It didn't work, because we're in Jones County, and everybody's opposed to a fee. And I was like, oh, well, it is what it is. But just a few weeks ago, a more brilliant idea came from another gentleman who had a very similar concept, with just using the existing resources we allocate it. So if you were here 10 years ago, and you remember me pitching that, can you raise your hand? All right, cool. I'm good with that. If you were here just a few weeks ago, where another gentleman came up and pitched a very similar concept with existing dollars, raise your hands? Great. All I have to say on this is real simple. You guys do a great job operating our fire department, and I'm happy with it. I'm happy with the fact that you came up with this solution to solve a problem that exists in the county that benefits everybody. And it didn't take the genius of the five of us elected officials, the county attorney, the county administrator, or the financier, I mean, the human resource director. When you can solve your own problem, man, that's fantastic. I hope every department in the county figures out better solutions for the county than we can, because all of us are smarter than any one of us. I'm 100% confident in that. Now, to address some things I heard that I'm not necessarily in agreement with. Fair housing, fair hiring practice, did we advertise a position? Very good. That's the first sign of fairness. We get any applicants? Two. That's the second sign. We advertised, somebody saw it, and two people applied. Great. What do we normally do after we close the hiring practice or the hiring period?
When it's a department head, we'll present them to the board, and the board decides who they want to interview.
When it's closed, you present it to the county commissioners, because it's a department head. Who is authorized to hire department heads in this county?
The board of commissioners.
The board of commissioners. Not the regional commission, not any other group, not any third party, not anybody in the state. And personally, I don't care about anybody else here but you guys and this county. And far be it from me, as an elected official, this is politics, is what we do. It's what we're elected to do. To pass this great responsibility on to somebody else, I'm not going to do that. I didn't do it with Parks and Rec. I didn't do it with the water department, and I didn't do it with public works. And I think we did really good. I didn't read a whole bunch of Facebook posts, because I'm wordy, and if you ever attack me on Facebook, you know you got hit back, because I don't play. I'm have a pretty good and extensive vocabulary, because I do have a master's degree in education, and a bachelor's in the business, and a whole street can of, "I'll whoop you behind." So with that being said, if you attack me openly on Facebook, you might want to be careful, because I swim in deep water, all right? There's a few people that try that in this county. They don't end well for them. They get their feelings hurt. My address is public, so anytime you want to visit me and have a conversation, you're welcome to do so. Some people have visited me, and I appreciate that. I haven't had a single visit, I haven't had a single phone call complaint by anyone on Facebook. I did get a Facebook message that kind of violated the law. Thank you for clarifying that for everybody, because she attempted to have us make some decisions or at least argue or debate this topic in a group. Two can, three can't, and five definitely can't. I'm excited about the option that was presented when the fire department is behind their own or behind a plan that makes sense for the county, just makes sense for us. If they're saving us money, great, because if it saves us money, it saves you money. If we can divert those resources to buy more equipment that we need to service the fire department, let's do it. If you've been around as long as I've been around, which is three terms, I've got to see the fire department grow. I've got to see us add some stuff to make the job better. We still have some stuff to add, some water knockers and some tankers to get around the county, absolutely. But the savings is going to help us get there. The plan that you guys put together is going to help us get there. And I think our response times will be better. And if you've been around any of the conversations I've had, I've been fighting and fussing about ISO for a long time, and I'm excited about that being affected in a positive direction by the choices you all have made. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say, you know, to Sam, because he thought it was a good idea in the very beginning, that I didn't exactly get it. Because I was on the same page with John and Wendy, that, yeah, we need it full-time. But what I really needed to understand was how we could accomplish full-time with the part-time plan that you guys came up with. And I'm comfortable with it. I sleep good at night, knowing that we have the right protection and the right people in place to make this county continue to operate well. So I'm looking forward to it. We'll go through the hiring process. We'll look at the people that are qualified. And qualification, just for the record, it's not just credentials, because I think I'm very credentialed. I have a few of them. For those that don't know, yeah, I have a bachelor's in business, a master's in education. I have a private student pilot license. I have a CDL. I think at one point, I had an insurance license, right? And I'm a certified county commissioner. What does that really mean? I have, and I'm a real estate agent. Look at that. I have a whole bunch of credentials, but at the end of the day, can I do the job? And you guys have a plan that solves that question. Can the job get done? And I'm going to rest right there. Thank you, sir.
Well, I've had nothing but support throughout this community. Restaurants, gas stations, you name it, wherever I've been, church, we're praying for you. Praying for all of y'all, and thanking every one of y'all. Because this room right here was started with a dream and a passion to serve this community years, years ago. Me and P, we were talking about it, about when they built the first fire truck. You might remember that? When they had the first fire truck, before the county could ever even finance and come up with the money, a group of people got together and built a fire truck. I think it's Station One. Is that right, Gary? Station One was formed. How many stations we got now? A pile of them. And that drive, what brings people to Jones County, to live here, and we keep getting asked, "How y'all get this done? How you get the volunteers and everything?" You just got to move to Jones County, but don't bring your troubles, will you? If you're going to bring a trouble, will you stay where you at? We don't need you here. So we've got it figured out. You just need to come move here and figure out how we rock and how these men and women come in here each and every day and answer the call. And it all started with a group of people years, years ago that started this driving. And yes, y'all are so valuable. I mean, you're a blessing to this community. And the ideas you come, I'm still like, wow. We had never thought about until the first work session of doing this very thing. And we want to thank each and every one of you. But I got some people signed in. Do y'all still want to speak?
Chairman, the board's already...
John? Just come up here and make sure the, make sure the mic's on.
Thank you. John Shipley, captain of Jones County Fire. All the points that I wanted to bring up, the board's already addressed. The only thing that I would like to add is, in today's world, we have to think outside the box and in non-traditional ways to get a job completed, and at a price that the Jones County taxpayers can afford, and I believe the boards are doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gary, I've got you signed in. You'd like to come up and say anything? Gary?
Gary Haron. I'm also with, a member of Jones County Fire Department. I'm also captain over at Station Eight as well. I'm like John, and what I've heard here tonight, I'm in complete agreement with what I'm hearing, and I support this plan fully. I feel like it's the best plan that's been presented out there to get us where we need to be in the future. And I have, you know, fully confident that when we get there at that point in time, we'll see the need to... we'll see the need when we need to go to a full-time chief and full-time, you know, staffing around the clock. But this will get us there. And I think when we get to that point, we'll be much better off. And I think this plan will get us there. So that's pretty much all I want to say. And again, I'd like the rest of my support with what I'm seeing.
Thank you. Mr. Crutchfield. I'm glad you signed in tonight. I think you're the senior, senior of seniors, right?
I will say a few words. To start with, I wasn't gonna say anything. James Crutchfield, Round Oak, Georgia. Been a member of the fire department for forty-eight years. And I believe if you'll check, I'd be the oldest member at this time. Anybody been there over forty-eight? Needless to say, I have been here a long time and I've been through a lot with the fire department. We went through a situation where we had to hire an EMA director a good while back. Don Graham came in. And we had a terrible time, y'all. And if you wasn't here, you don't know. But we lost some good firefighters due to, to that situation. And Don had a heck of a road to hold. And he did a good job, excellent job. And Jones County right now is blessed to have the equipment and the people they've got fighting fires in this county. And I hope everybody realizes that. But we get into a situation, y'all, on volunteers. You can't find them anymore. It's not only Jones County, it's everybody. We fortunate that we've got many that we've got. So we, we've got to take a step in some direction. Now, the plan that's, that, this plan that came out from Van and a lot of firefighters that sat down and worked with commissioners. And I want to tell you right now, commissioners, we appreciate y'all taking in consideration of talking to the fire department before any decisions were made. This is the first time I can believe it, it's ever happened. I don't believe it's happened before they come to and say, hey, come up. What y'all got? What kind of plan you got? Van came up with a plan with the help of some other people. Who knows if it's gonna work? Nobody knows if that plan's gonna work. But we got to do something, y'all. What do you do on fourth down when you got ten yards to go? You punt. So we're gonna, we're gonna try it and we're gonna see if it's gonna work. I hope y'all support this thing. Part-time director ain't got nothing to do with it. Thomas has got more experience with volunteers in full-time than anybody in this county. He would be an excellent choice. And by doing that, you stand within ranks to the fire department, which is a hundred percent favorable in most cases. You can't satisfy everybody. There's always gonna be two or three that can't be satisfied. But I'm asking y'all to go ahead and let's get this thing going, see if it's gonna work. And if it don't work, we'll drop back and punt. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Herndon, you asked me to keep you to last. Do you still want to speak?
I'm, I'm good, sir. Thank you.
Is anybody here tonight that's got any questions or opposed to this idea? No one? No one in the hall? Any other, any other comments for this work session? Anybody else we get, we got twenty minutes left? Ms. Jordan here? Ms. Jordan, are you here? Nope. Is there any other business, Ms. Vone, for our work session?
None. Having none, can, we can adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make one clarification on this.
Sure.
I appreciate Sam clarifying some things tonight such as the interim part. But the interim was not mentioned in the first or second work sessions with the fire captains. It was changed into a part-time position. And I know the individual would like the part-time position, works in a different agency and has some time, several years left at that agency. And I, I applaud him for sticking with a professional job there. But when we speak of interim, interim, I don't know if you want to classify that as multiple years until maybe he retires and then can take a full-time position here. I do support having part-time daily firemen covering calls, getting the trucks rolling till the volunteers can get there. Because that's intricate in getting somebody's house saved or a life saved. Whether it be a choke in a heart attack, a stroke, whatever may the case be. It's intricate to get somebody there quickly. And this is a growing county. We have numerous people moving in daily, weekly, monthly. And I appreciate all the volunteers. My focus on this has been with the director. I have never said anything against the daily people. Two years ago, I think it was FY twenty-third, twenty-two? No, it was FY twenty-three if I think back to my budgets. This Board of Commissioners, the five of us approved, what, six-hundred-thousand dollars for the paid people? That money has sat there for this long. I was pushing then and would like to have hired then to get twenty-four-seven coverage to get these. Because take the burden off our volunteers. Because they, you get wore out. You get wore out. You, you can only answer so many calls before you're just hired. And I've heard the chairman say it many times, family first. People gotta have time for their families. They got little ones. They need to spend time with those little ones. They're not little forever. You got work, you got church, you got other extracurricular activities. So I just want to be clear. I'll support an interim director. But I look at the overall position, the emergency manager stuff. I spoke with Jason Ritter today, Area Four, Wijima. And he said that is a full-time position because there's a lot that goes into it. There's a lot that can happen. He wished he could be here tonight to speak. And he would like to come speak to the Board of Commissioners in a public meeting and have a discussion about what exactly goes into that job. So we have a lot of decisions to make, but no, I support the fire department. And I want the coverage for our citizens. Because, you know, I went down and talked with the, and this is not against anybody. This is a three-day call log, partial call log. And it's been clarified, cleansed of any HIPAA violations in it. And I'm gonna present it tonight to the chairman, y'all can pass it around. But these are after hours, after five PM, Monday through Friday, and before eight AM. These are calls that are going unanswered. And we've got to get people in place to answer calls when our volunteers may be tied up or unavailable to answer. Because these are people's lives in these calls. This is just a couple of day, and the sheriff is keeping track of these records. And I asked for a couple of hours of one day and he handed me a whole stack. He said, here, you need three more days beyond that. I said, okay. And so I just want the best for our citizens. And interim director, yes, that'll work. Part-time fireman, twelve-hour shifts, hey, that works. That gets the trucks rolling, gets somebody's house saved, it gets somebody's life saved till the volunteers could come in and help and do what they do best.
Chairman, I'll respond just respectfully and, and not to belabor the point. But I don't think any of the, the plans that were originally brought to us dealt with the chief position or the EMA position. It was more about, or all about, part-time firemen, twenty part-time firemen instead of the nine full-time firemen and how we could make that work. Now, we did start talking about what is our transition plan when Don leaves. No, there was never mention of EMA certification until after our second meeting. And EMA certification is a requirement. The only two people in this county that have it are leaving. So we know that's a requirement of a transition process. We know that moving forward, that's gotta happen. Which is why we started talking about, I started talking about separating the fire chief and the EMA position. We don't have anybody to fill that EMA position. We've got to hire an EMA certified person, period. So that was where my thought came from on the, the interim chief is one thing. The EMA is something else. We've got to have that. And in my opinion, it needs to be a full-time person. But I'll go back to, we have four positions being occupied by two people. So if you took the half of each position and made one full-time person, we're not doing anything different other than making three people out of the two people in four positions, three people doing those positions now. I, I would agree. I, I listened to how many things are not happening with, with no response. My answer to that is, that's exactly why this plan will work better. Because when somebody's on the clock, they're going to. We, we've talked about this before. Volunteers have it in their heart, they want to answer. But they also have family, they have vacations, they have things going on. Or they may even be on their full-time job, they may be asleep, whatever it is. But if you're a part-time employee and you're on the clock, you're answering that call. It's not a choice of somebody else will get it. Or I'm a volunteer, I'll go when I can, the best I can. It's a, it's a guarantee that they're gonna be there. Because if they're on the clock and they're not answering calls, they won't be on the clock. I mean, that's, that's my opinion on a part-time pay versus a volunteer situation. So the interim position, it is, it is just moving the most qualified person into the, the position that's being vacated for an interim time to get us to the next spot. And that's, that's what we gotta have now. And that, and that's why I support it, but.
Mr. Chairman, this matter has been resolved. The people have spoken, the fire department is pleased, and we have a plan. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Favor. I, I thank each and every one of you. Hey, y'all can save for the meeting too now if you want. We, we love it when everyone.